Hello and welcome to the Asian American Forward Podcast. I am your host Katie Simpson and we're here, of course, with my co-host Dawn Sun. And I'm really excited because for the first time ever on our show, we have sort of a panel. We have a couple of New York City Council candidates with us today. We have Dao Yin and Edwin Wong. Dawn, Dao, Edwin, hi guys.
Hi Katie.
Hi Katie and Dawn.
Really exciting to have you guys on here and fun to have you joining me from the East Coast. I hope you guys had a good day getting into your evening now. And so I'm really excited to talk to you guys about issues facing New York City. We've done a lot of that on this show, but also to just sort of have a nice relaxed chat and kind of see how this goes. But before we get started, I wanted to give you each a chance to introduce yourself to our audience. So we can just start from the top of my Zoom screen. So Dao, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, good afternoon. First, thank you Katie and Dawn. My name is Dao Yin. I'm the candidate for New York City Council in District 20. Basically covers Flushing and Flushing Meadows. First of all, I'm not a politician. I'm from business world. I have been a community activist for about two decades now. As I said, I'm a community minded person. I came from community. I'm ready to work for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Edwin?
Hi again, Katie and Dawn, thank you so much for this opportunity. And Dao, it's great to see you as always and being on this, I guess, first ever panel with more than one person. So again, my name is Edwin Wong and I'm also a New York City Council candidate in Queens in District 29, which encompasses the neighborhoods of Forest Hills, Regal Park, Kew Gardens, and parts of Richmond Hill and Middle Village. I'm a Queens-born, New York City native, live in Forest Hills now with my two sons and my wife. I'm a son of immigrants. My late mother was a New York City public school teacher and my father also worked for the city Department of Social Services. And one unique thing about me right now is even as a candidate, as council, I'm actually the only Chinese-American Democratic State Committee male member in all of Queens, in the borough of Queens, in New York. I have about 20 years of experience in the community advocacy world and 15 years working and supporting small commercial banking businesses. And these are the experience that I'll use to help us out of our fiscal and current crisis here in New York City. And so I can share more as we speak. But again, that's just a quick summary and highlights at this point in time. And really, I'm running really to bring unity and leadership as well to the city and the campaign. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks guys for introducing yourself. And I guess Dawn, I'll also give you a minute if you want to speak on why you invited these two here to talk with us today.
Thank you Katie. Anytime, I'm not going to refuse the microphone time, okay? Just like a politician. But of course, it's the two of them is a very good friend of mine and also it's a very dedicated and supporter for Andrew Yang. And Andrew Yang is running for New York Mayor at this moment. And Dao Yin and Edwin, we have been go through the Yang 2020, the presidential election years, and both of them are very supportive to Andrew. And they are not only the talker, but they are action, the doer. So it's the, I truly appreciate every day I spend in New York. You know, I'm in California and now it's I flew in New York now. So every time he's coming here, I try to meet with Dao Yin or Edwin and feel so enjoyable talking to them, both politics and also personal life. So it's the, I think it's with their intelligence and their personal integrity, regardless of whether win or lose, we need more Asian American to stand up and serve the community, but especially in the process of decision-making process, especially in New York City. New York City is huge, but the position Asian can voice their concern, they can make decision is still very, very rare. We almost have no voice in terms of any school issue and also it's a security issue, safety issue, especially for the reason that Asian hate crime since has been becoming a national attention. But overall, in the mainstream media, we still it's where we can nobody pay attention to us. That's why I want to, two of them to come into our show, share their thoughts about all the issue. It's welcome to work with you and just tell the people, audience, your true feeling and your plan and what we can deal with now and the future. Back to you Katie.
May I just make a quick comment if it's okay? I just want to say thank you to Dao, because Dao is actually the person that invited me to an Andrew Yang fundraiser in Flushing when it was June 2019. So he's the one that got me interested and involved. I actually got involved and I actually became a delegate when Andrew Yang drafted president. And I'm actually right now the only city council candidate who supported him as a delegate as president. And I think one, if not maybe the only person that kind of supported his efforts as part of the whole Freedom Dividend and UBI. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you to Dao to introduce me. And then from there, I introduced my brother, my brother got involved and he became a delegate. So the kind of things snowballed from there. And I think now he's running for mayor, it's great. I think we have an opportunity to support him, even though we're both running our respective city council candidate district campaigns, we still find time to support Andrew and your efforts as well Dawn. So anything you need, we're here for you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, I was the person to introduce Edwin to Andrew's team. The reason is simple, as I say, I'm not a politician. I'm from business world, I'm a community activist. I like to, you know, think of something out of a box. When I heard Andrew Yang, Andrew Pluna, that time 44 years old, jumped to the presidential race, I always talked to my people in the community, why not? You can try. Finally, Andrew Yang made a history. Now Andrew Yang is making history again. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great to get that background on how all of you guys know each other. And I love hearing those kinds of stories about people's connection. But I wanted to start on kind of a serious note, just because we're recording on the heels of the tragic mass murder targeting two Asian-owned businesses in Atlanta. So before we kind of pivot a little bit to New York politics, I wanted to give each of you a chance to kind of respond to the uptick in hate crimes that we've generally seen this year, targeting people of Asian descent and also this event in particular. So Edwin, if you want to go first this time in responding to that.
Right, yeah, I mean, what happened in Atlanta was just a tragedy, it's very unfortunate. Again, I should just like to maybe just take a moment of silence just for the victims, just for like, I think it was eight seconds is fine. And so again, I think it's important for us to look at some of the solutions. I think a lot of things are happening now. There's a lot of rallies, it's great to see a lot of activism, but I think now it's also the time where we think of solutions. And that's what I've been doing and we've been talking to my friends and people I know and to figure out how it is that we can address some of the issues of anti-Asian racism, the hate that's happening. And actually, I came up with an acronym, ACE for ACE, in terms of things that I think we can do. Very, very simple, I think, things that can happen, it just hasn't happened yet. I think the A is really just to advocate for and fundraise for some of these APA organizations that are out there. There are numerous numbers of them that are right now active and doing things, but they're working on shoestring budgets. You'll hear something called budget equity. I think that term is, you're going to see here more and more, and especially at this point in time, how do we get more of our city, state and federal budgets to fund some of the programs that these APA organizations are doing to do outreach to the community, like language translations, things that you don't see too often in all the communities. And so we definitely need to figure out a way to fund and make it more reflective of our current populations in terms of the budget allocations. And the C is really for collaboration. How do we get organizations to collaborate with one another? Just not just the Asian-American organization, but the non-Asian-American organizations. How do we get everyone to collaborate with one another to support each other? And I even think that has to go down to even the local, what they call these precinct councils, which they are the interface between the local precincts and the community. Work with them and to try to figure out how do we build those relationships between our police as well as our community. And then the E is really for education. How do we educate one another on the contributions of Asian-Americans to this country? You know, again, many aren't aware that many Chinese and Asians, they've helped build the US Transcontinental Railroad. And that was a significant achievement for the US, within the US history books. And it's just not really mentioned. And so what I'm going to be doing is really calling on our New York City Department of Education to figure out how do we fund Asian-American studies programs at the elementary, middle school and even high school levels? And really, that'll help, I think, address some of the bullying that people are also going to experience. I think it's happened, it's unfortunate, but I think if we can educate kids when they're younger, these bullies hopefully won't grow up to be adult bullies. And then these adult bullies could be the perpetrators of the attacks against the Asian community at this point in time or in the future, and specifically against our seniors. I think that's really, I think that's the thing that really gets me more emotional when we have attacks against our most vulnerable seniors. And you've seen that and there was a death in California where someone just ran up the guy, knocked him down and he passed away. And so those are the three things I think we can try to focus on in terms of solution to bring the community together and also just advocate for better awareness and understanding of one another so that these attacks and things can be reduced and hopefully prevented.
That's great. Dao, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, as Edwin said, we have a lot, a lot of tasks to do. But I personally think what happened in Atlanta is definitely Asian hate crime related and also is due to the systematic discrimination to the minorities. And also, there is a main reason because the previous president said something, you know, the coronavirus was the China virus. It's totally not acceptable. Everybody knows what are we going to do is to put people together, not further divide this nation. And also, when you think about how to prevent the tragedy happening in the future, that's very important. Like yesterday, a mass shooting again killed 10 people in Colorado happened. So we need to think about this country. We're going to prevent it happening from the future. We have a way, we have a people. We need to use high technology, as I always say, we need to use the better system to prevent increased crimes and also work with the police and have a better relationship between the police and the community. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think what you said about the relationship between the police and the community, Dao, is a really good segue into a question that I kind of had in mind for Edwin, which is that this week, the NYPD announced that it would be increasing patrols in predominantly Asian neighborhoods, kind of in response to this violence. And I'm wondering how you weigh this kind of decision and other policing proposals, especially with the events of the summer arguing that some, you know, people of color feel less safe when there is a higher police presence around them. So kind of how are you balancing those things in your mind?
Do you want me to take that one or Dao?
Yes, yeah, please, sorry.
So, yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely a need for us to build better relationships between the police and the communities that they serve. I think for me, I've been involved with our local precinct council meeting, not as active as I would like to be, but at least attending some of the meetings and trying to better understand and be the relationship between the Asian-American community and the precinct. I mean, there have been a couple of instances where we feel that there's some racism involved and I think it kind of even attacks against some folks in the community. And I would basically try to connect the victim to the police precinct because a lot of them are afraid, they don't want to go to police, they don't want to report it. So what we've been trying to do is encourage them to report it. Otherwise, if you don't report the incident, it won't basically exist. And that's why right now, there's a lot of under-reporting of crimes against Asian-Americans. And when you see the police reports that they only had like 29 or 30 reports of hate, whereas other reports, they're in the thousands. So there's a disconnect and I think we need to make sure that people feel comfortable to report these incidents to the police. And I think that there's definitely also this concern about overpolicing. I think that is a very, very, it's an area that many communities of color are concerned about, where there are too many police and they do fear and that's why they don't report and that's why there's under-reporting of crime and mistrust. And I think we need to try to again, build that relationship. One thing that happens every year, there's a night out against crime. I think a lot of people aren't aware of it. I think it happens in August where, you know, the police precinct and the community council get together and do things with the community. They will engage the community, have events for the community and again, try to build that relationship with the community. So I think as we try to, you know, build these relationships with the community and the police, I think the more and more that we can do that, I think the better, I think the less, I guess, concerns people may have in terms of overpolicing. But I think definitely we have to just address the concerns that people do have about overpolicing because it does exist. But again, I think if we can build that relationship with the community and the precinct, that'll definitely help with the relationships. And then people will become more comfortable, I think, when they see police in uniform or they see a police car, they hear sirens. And I think that hopefully will help with those relationships and address any concerns that they have.
Yeah, follow both of your questions. As a candidate, you know, it's the Asian community and the black community, they have a different viewpoint toward the policing. So it's the, I just want you both to just answer the very, very, maybe a little bit tough or challenging question. There's so much strong voice from our community. They keep shouting out, say, to the defund the police. Defund the, because police and the union, they have a strong political establishment and the connection. And also, they have a very strong established, the both side, it's a very, very strong polarized opinions. But for the Asian community, we are kind of in between. So it's for the defunding police in terms of, Edwin, you are kind of a very expert on the money and the budget. From a budget side, what's your thought? And for the Dao Yin, after that one, I'm going to give you a particular angle to ask you.
Oh, yeah, I think in terms of the budget, there's definitely room for improvement. I think there are the certain budget items, even I think you can speak to the NYPD about it. There are certain things that may be in the budget that is focused on, let's say, addressing homelessness or addressing mental health issues and things like that. I think the NYPD, I mean, their focus is, you know, fighting crime and decreasing crime. I think that's their focus. And I think these other areas where there's an opportunity to where we can maybe have a budget, you know, item or some funds moved out to those other areas of focus, I think I'm definitely for that. And I think that we need to address other issues to reduce incarceration of individuals. I don't think we need more people in jail. I think we need to kind of get to the core issues that if they have a drug addiction, let's get them into a drug prevention program. If they have a mental illness, let's just get them into some type of program where they can, you know, help with the mental illness. We don't need to put those individuals into jails. And I think that there's a balancing act of, because there is violence and unfortunately, these things do happen and they have to be punished in a way that can address the issue. But again, I think a lot of it has to do with looking for ways of reducing incarceration, but at the same time, addressing the issues that folks may have. And I think the budget again, can be allocated as such where you can take some funds and put it into these different programs, which will help reduce crime.
Just to follow up one specific question. When people ask for the defund the policing, that's the part of it to restructure the allocation of a budget, but we want to reduce the total police budget. Do I agree with that direction or is it not necessary or facing the crime and the Asian want to just keep the existing budget and just do some real allocation of money?
Yeah, I always say reallocate, I don't say defund. I think if you reallocate, that's the proper word to use. I think when you say defund, that means you want to get rid of the police and I don't, I'm not for getting rid of the police this time.
Good, very, very clear message. And Dao Yin, my question is similar on this subject. It's, I know in recently, you have been lead the community patrol and the street patrol and the community safeguard by the community yourself. But I personally feel that, of course, the volunteer is the one part, also self-funding is a part, but also it's how your community patrol team and this effort coordinate with the police department, with the government, that's kind of a thing, it's a little bit a challenge because if one particular group or it's a shift or community leaders, their political power is stronger and also it's you may be funded by the community support. So there's going to have some money involved. So it's a kind of a, when you protect yourself, but on the other side, you have a lot of work to coordinate each different shift and how you pay the volunteers or you pay the staff to do the safety and whether they have a professional training. And after that, it can be sustainable, for the sustainability is my main concern and make sure it's a community have a good reputation and they can defend themselves and also it can be work with the police department. I think that's my concern, I the question, and also maybe just like a regular people, we always think self-community involvement is good, but on the other side, it's also it's maybe have some a challenge work you have to do. Thank you, Dao.
Yes, yes, as Dawn you say, you are to the very point. You know why? Because I give you example. Flushing did have the on-street patrol team from 2010 to 2016. Somewhat they could not continue because of financial difficulty and other issues. While Brooklyn has one team, they establish in 2014, even now, they are very active. And Chinatown, we have a similar organizations as well. Now, we have a task to put those very young, let's say, 14s, which I arranged the announcement, the establishment on Sunday. We have a lot to do. As I said, I'm from business world. First, we need people. Secondly, we need equipment or you say systems. People, we need to recruit volunteers, but we need to provide facility. As you said, we need office space, we need a lot of volunteers to communicate each other, be trained. And we need to have a seminar, we're going to invite the local police and the community, police officers to come down to our office to train, to educate the people because fundamentally, our volunteers are on the walk on the street. Actually, they started yesterday, I was there, when team started yesterday. We are the ears and eyes on the street. We have a very limited equipment, we are not a police officer. So there's a lot to do, but the first is we give the society a message, we are protecting ourselves. But more importantly is again, to build the relationship between the community and the police department. Because the patrol teams are volunteers from the community, they work for the community. We need a lot to learn. That's why when I have event in Flushing, I will invite the patrol team founder from Brooklyn. I will invite committee leaders from Chinatown. We need to learn each other. We just make not only one area, we want to make the whole city safe, a safe place. So this is the one. The second one is also, I will continue to work with the people to provide the funding, to provide the skills, knowledge to the patrol teams and to the whole community to have them have the mindset from how to call 911 because a lot of citizens here, live here, they have a language balance. Because I think in Queens, more than half residents, they use their own native language, language than English at home. So a lot have to be done. Thank you.
I love the emphasis on community that both of you have and in building relationships. I think that that's really important, especially as we come out of this pandemic, which has left us all kind of isolated from one another. So I kind of wanted to open it up and ask a broader question about what you see as, you know, as we come into the spring, more and more people getting vaccinated and into the summer, hopefully, it feels like the pandemic is finally kind of drawing to a close or at least getting to a point where it's manageable enough that we're going to start kind of emerging from our shells. So I'm wondering what you see as the biggest issue facing New York as the pandemic sort of ends and we begin that process of rebuilding and recovery? Edwin, you can go first on this one.
Yeah, you had mentioned it and you touched upon, I think the initial thing is definitely making sure that folks are vaccinated. I think the vaccine distribution needs a little bit of improvement right now. I think it needs to be a little bit more fairly distributed, especially to those who are in communities of color, which have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. I think we need to really make sure that, even though a lot of people think, so yeah, the vaccine is here, but we need to make sure that everyone is getting access to the vaccine. Everyone's heard the stories around the country where only certain people are getting the vaccinations first and they're getting prioritized and it's not really fair. And so we need to make sure that there's equitable distribution of the vaccines. And then as that is happening, we also need to concurrently make sure that we support our small businesses. Because I think we really need to support small businesses and I should say business recovery in general. We need to make sure that, you know, for our small businesses, that we can provide grants to them. So again, they can at least use the money to pay for expenses like rent and pay their staff. I think unfortunately, a lot of people are unemployed and we need to really get everyone back into some type of employment. We need to make sure that again, we support the business till they can hire, you know, the old staff back. I think the other thing that we have to do is to make sure that, you know, there's a lot of fines that are happening right now. I just feel that we have to try to give a little bit of leeway to the businesses that are being fined and see if we can either reduce it or at least give them a warning. Because I hear stories when I saw the small business owners where they hear someone getting a fine of $500 to $1,000 for something that they weren't even aware of. And I think that we have to.
That's fines related to like COVID restrictions?
Exactly, exactly, the COVID, there were instructions of what to do because of COVID. And so if they didn't follow it to the T, they will get a fine for it. I think you need to at least, you know, give them some kind of warning or let them know that hey, this needs to be done before you get a fine. And I think, and then when you have the business recovery and you have employment, that helps adjust a little bit of homelessness as well. Because I know when you become unemployed, you have an income, you lose your home. And then that results in some of the increase in homelessness. And I think that's all part of how we employ, keep people employed or re-employ everyone and find opportunities for them and to recover. And so I think the focus is really on business recovery and then things will go from there.
Dao, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, as everybody knows, small business hide more people than large corporations in this nation. We definitely need to help small business recover from COVID-19. Besides the governmental ends, I strongly suggest that large corporations work with small business because usually large corporations purchase materials, parts and service from small business. They can work each other. That's why I never ever against we, let's say Queens, introduce Amazon, the giant, have their headquarters or warehouse in Queens to help our economy. Unfortunately, politicians rejected Amazon, but we still, we will have a chance to work with larger corporations because every business has its rivals, even Amazon has rivals as well. So when the thing, again, think out of a box, because due to the COVID-19, I'm afraid maybe 30, 40% traditional hotels, restaurants, they just cannot survive. And the more young people, they purchase everything from, you know, the website. So when they think about the new type of business and when they think about robotics, as Andrew and I were anxious, the automation will remove thousands, millions jobs from human being. So both government, corporations, small business, when you think about our future, then we can get a health economy. We can keep the United States on top, be a leading country in the world. Thank you.
Good, and I do have a question. Good. And uh, I do have a question. You know, it's the, I'm running for the election all the time. So it's the, my question probably is a very particular specified about your candidacy. So it is possible you can just each give me uh, or give audience some description about your uh, district demographics and also it's your campaign. Uh, not the strategy. I know strategy is a secret for yours, for your winning sauce, but just the the winning path is in January to the how you can convince your uh, district, the people vote for you and technically the how much money each of you have been raised. And also it's the how many, how many votes in your pocket. And in January, this podcast, we focus on the Asian American. And this year, uh, at this year and this moment, and what's the uh, the, the, the mentality of the your district Asian community, how enthusiasm they are going to come out to vote. So this is the, the, my question to both of you. Edwin, you can start to uh, you have to unmute.
Thank you. Uh, our district is about twenty-five percent to thirty percent Asian American. And so I think that is a, is a big um, demographic in our, in our neighborhood. Um, so that is one of my focus areas again, but again, I'm not just targeting the Asian American community, but I'm targeting um, everyone else as well. Uh, in terms of, again, I'm, I'm running on a platform which I'm using an acronym called SAME. It's S A M E. Um, so again, that's focused on small business. And I mentioned earlier, we need to increase funding for our small business community and give them like grants and low interest loans. Um, and also our seniors, you know, we need to help our aging seniors. And what I'm proposing is something called universal home care. Where we would have home attendant visits or home care uh, visits so that we can have folks visit our seniors um, and then care for our seniors. And this will extend also to those who are disabled, because at this point in time, we also need to address some of the issues that some of our folks that are disabled have challenges with. Um, and then, you know, something called, and this is also something that Andrew is proposing in terms of just bridging the digital divide, something I'm calling modern technology family. We want to make sure that all our families and our children have access to the internet. Uh, at this point in time, not everyone does. And that's very tough right now when it comes to remote schooling and access to the internet. And that leads into E, which is for education. You know, our district, again, we want what's called free three K. Uh, I guess you can say it's nursery. And so we want it to be district in our district and citywide. Right now, certain uh, school districts have free three K, but not everyone does. And that's one of the things I'm trying to push and promote. And again, this helps save money for our parents and for even our single parents where if they don't have to pay for um, school, they can use the money for rent or for food or for medicine or clothing for their children. So I think these are things that I think will resonate with the community, both the Asian and non-Asians. And then a, a, another thing that we all are aware of is, is this funding for hospitals and our healthcare workers. We need to make sure that they have the funding for the PPE and anything else they need. Um, and as well as something that Andrew touches all the time on, we need to provide some kind of relief, whether it be cash relief directly to our, our renters or maybe indirectly, even with some kind of tax relief uh, as well. And and tax release also applies to landlords because landlords have bills to pay as well. And they have to, you know, pay property taxes, which is a big source of revenue for, for New York City, New York State. Uh, and then that's one thing that people are trying to address right now. Um, and so all of these things are things that I've been sharing with the folks here in, in, in the district in terms of uh, why they should vote for me. And the one historical thing that I've been sharing with some that may relate within the Asian American community is that again, I was born and raised in New York City. And if I am elected as a city council member, I would be the first Chinese-American uh, New York City born and raised, a city council member. And I would be like the Jeremy Lin of the New York City Council. So that's what I've been kind of sharing with everyone that everyone knows Jeremy Lin is the first, you know, like as you can say, uh, Chinese-American born and raised in the, in the U S to be a part of the NBA. And so I'm using that as a kind of relatable messaging to people. It's a historical thing where uh, I would be the first New York City born and raised Chinese-American city council member. So, so that's part of the messaging I'm sharing. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah, excellent. Dow?
Yes, uh, okay, I'm gonna skip my agendas. I'm gonna tell uh, my, my thinking, my ideas, my plan, not only for the particular district twenty, but also for the borough Queens and for the city as a whole. Because obviously establishments failed our society from affordable housing, job security to education as well as public safety now. So now, now we need a person or we need some people. They, they will have the plan in their mind. They have a people to support. They will know always they have a improved mindset, as I say, because we are United States, we don't need a revolution. Some country need a revolutions. What this country is the leading country in the world, we need improvements. So how, for example, affordable housing, everybody, every candidate is talking about affordable housing. When you put five eight years to build a building as affordable housing, when the building is done, the apartment is done, they are not affordable. First, the property tax. Second, in the, in New York, the building materials, the price soar. So how do you deal with very difficult affordable housing? I have idea in my mind, we can, we can learn from Japan, from German. We can build small unit, pre-fabricated material, affordable housing. We need to think not only the elders, but also college graduates. Think about the parents, the college students, they pay the thousands for the tuition. When they graduated, they have a difficult to find a job. Even they find a job, their monthly rental expense could be forty percent, even fifty percent of their income. In that case, there is no quality of life. That's why my affordable housing is considered both local residents and also college graduates. The first. Secondly, treat the New York City as a whole. I was the first, one of the first people to advocate to develop London City as early as I think is twenty sixteen. Why? There's a reason. When you build a part of a Queens, connect to the New York City, young people, they like to work for corporations, for startups. So young people in Queens, if they live in Queens, they, they don't need to go to very crowded committed to the city to do a job. You know, now you see, we build, we build London City. Of course, you cannot make everybody happy. But still, you, you need to think that whole New York City as a whole, then you can eliminate what the current mayor said, two city problem. That's why I would say you need to have a new plan, new thinking, because our establishment failed.
Yeah, I think there's, that definitely gives us a lot, um, sort of to think about going forward and um, talking about the, the way in which twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one have sort of revealed big, big systemic uh, flaws in this country. I want to um, sort of close it up by maybe asking a little bit more of a personal question um, of each of you before we kind of uh, get to the end, uh, which is, um, you've both lived in Queens for good portions of your life. Edwin, you were born in Queens also, right?
Yeah, I've lived in Queens all my life. Literally, I was born in Manhattan, but then I was taken to Queens. But yeah, so I'm New York City born, bred, bred in Queens specifically, yes.
Yeah, so I wanted to ask of you both, and we can start with Dow for this, but um, I wanted to ask of you both, what you think the biggest change you've seen um, in Queens over the years that you've been there has been? Um, and as a part of that question, I also wanted to give you guys the chance to shout out any uh, small business in Queens that you think deserves a little bit of extra love.
Yeah, let's say about Flushing. Uh, I came to this country uh, in nineteen ninety-eight. The first stop I had is Flushing. The first thing I do is I receive the library card from downtown, you know, Flushing Library, which is a landmark of the, you know, city. For the past twenty-three years, uh, Flushing uh, changed a lot. Uh, we, um, you know, I mean, I say we, not only, you know, the Asian people, with all Spanish people, minorities, white, Jewish. We build Flushing, Flushing, the hub of economy of the New York City. We are very proud to that. Yeah, we build because we is harder, harder working people. Flushing did change a lot, but not enough, not enough. We need, let's say, international convention center. We may need a future air train. You know, the air train, um, you know, the project is underway. So can mitigate the, the, the traffic uh, to, you know, Laguardia Airport. So we have a lot to do. But we are very confident we can build Flushing a better place to live with a quality of life. Thank you.
Do you have a small business you want to shout out?
Uh, myself?
Yeah.
You mean myself? Okay. I, okay, actually, I started a, a small business as a, um, online, what is called the e-commerce as early as two thousand two. Where, where the um, master degree in uh, computer, uh, what is called the MIS. I, I had a startup. Basically, we sell stuff online. That, that was two thousand two. Now I have a very small business in my consulting company because uh, I know the budgeting finance, I know I have an IT background. Uh, I'm, I have a, um, the small consulting company uh, is in IT and finance consulting to work for small business.
Hmm. Edwin, how about you? How has, how has Queens evolved over the course of your life?
I, I mean, of course, um, the demographics have changed significantly. I think as part of the immigration that happened um, in the sixties, you have a lot more uh, Asian Americans moving in um, to different neighborhoods. And this is all across Queens. I think again, the population of Queens is about, I would just say twenty-five percent, thirty percent Asian as well. And, and this is, when I say Asian, I mean East Asian, South Asian, Southeast Asians or everyone. Um, and that, that's not including even folks that, you know, you know, from, from Central Asia that we can even say are Asian Americans. So um, there's definitely been an increase in, in, in the um, diversity of the, of the, of Queens. I think it's great because it's resonating with all the different languages that you speak. When, when you go anywhere in Queens, you'll, you'll hear different languages, not just English. Uh, that's the thing that's amazing about Queens where everyone, um, for the most part, I think can say gets along. And I think that um, the one thing I'm, I'm most proud of is, is, is Queens, again, the epicenter of the epicenter uh, here in Elmer's. And I think everyone came together, uh, people came out, they donated, they got PPE. They, they took time out to just visit the nurses and the doctors and to say thank you. There was a seven o'clock clap every single night for a period of time. And I think people um, came together to help those who are in need. Your neighbors that maybe, you know, even right now have food insecurity. I think people are coming around and, and helping them and um, for the kids, some kids didn't have laptops or computers to do remote schooling. And people actually came and donated. I actually did the same thing. My, my mother was a public school teacher uh, at a title one school called PS twenty in Lower Manhattan. And I donated money to them so that they can get um, you know, um, you know, you know, computer equipment for, for the kids. And so I think everyone shipped in. I think that's um, you know, what uh, Queens folks do. I think that's what the New York City did. I think everyone really came together and did what they could and shipped in where they could, where they, they could help their neighbors and, and fellow, um, you know, residents. Um, I think, um, you know, I think as, uh, people always have this thing where, you know, people aren't getting along, but I think that's just some aspects of the community. But I think uh, even all the things that's happening right now, even with this anti-Asian hate, uh, the community has come together to, to help combat that. And the city is coming together to do that as well. And I think the country is doing that as well. And I think um, if I can just mention that this Friday, there's going to be a, a national um, uh, day of action uh, to stop Asian hate. So for those that aren't aware of it, I think we're all trying to do something on, on Friday to, to make sure that we can participate in that. So uh, thank you.
And do you have a Queens small business you want to shout out?
I will, oh, there's a lot, but I think I'll just mention one in my neighborhood. There's one, Fidad Bakery that some of you may know about. It's um, again, it's a family-owned small business that have multiple locations throughout the city. And again, there's one here in Forest Hills. Uh, there's a couple in Flushing. I think that's my, my go-to place if I need to go somewhere for breakfast to get like my roast pork bun or my tea with milk. And so um, I think I'll just mention those guys for now, but there's as many.
My mouth is just watering thinking about it. Oh my goodness.
Yeah.
Um, that is so great. Okay. I do want to do one last thing with you guys, but we're going to do it really fast because we're running a little short on time. So try to answer in one to two sentences, a book that you would recommend to our audience. We can start with Dow.
A, a book?
Yeah, a book. What book would you recommend to our audience?
Okay, uh, I don't remember the full title, but it could be Seven Habits of Most Effective People.
Ooh. Okay, Edwin, how about you?
I'll do a more personal um, uh, book. My, my younger brother, Chris, well, his name is Christopher Wong, but he goes by Christopher Kai. He wrote a book called Big Game Hunting, Networking with Billionaires, Executive and Celebrities. And the title of the book is what the book is about. So if people want to learn about how to network with well, high net worth individuals and executives and celebrities, um, he wrote a book about it because that's what he did. And he just wanted to share his experience and how he did it. Uh, and I think that was, you know, a book that I would recommend people read.
Okay, I do have to ask one more question about that because I'm interested. So like, what's the most famous person that he like rubbed shoulders with?
He worked, I mean, I think one of the ones that I think helped him get is Elon Musk. Uh, my brother, actually, uh, I don't know for the folks that are out in LA, um, there's, I think it's called Union, Union Rescue Mission. Um, it's like the largest homeless um, shelter in, 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 in at least California, maybe the United States. And he did a weekly um, volunteer, uh, I guess, session or workshop where he helped the kids there, uh, try to, you know, find role models that they can actually um, aspire to. And he somehow got connected to Elon Musk and he came and this is all, this is on YouTube too. I can send you guys the link, but he interviewed him and I think he uh, really did a good job with that. And from there, he ended up meeting other people and I think, um, I think really just to help the, the children within the homeless shelter system there. Um, to really, you know, have some hope uh, and aspire to be uh, someone like an Elon Musk or, or other individuals that he's had, uh, had met. Um, but again, he's gotten into different events where he's met, you know, other folks like, you know, former president Bill Clinton. I think he met Jeff Bezos as well. A, a variety of different um, folks that he, he met um, over his, his years of uh, doing what he does.
Well, that is a fun note to end on and bringing it back to California after we spent a lot of time talking about the East Coast. So I, I appreciate that. Um,
That wasn't intentional, it just happened, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's great. Dow, uh, Edwin, thanks so much for making time for us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having me. Thank you again.
Yeah, and we will wrap it up there for this week. Dawn, of course, also thank you for joining me as usual. My name is Katie Simpson. Our podcast is sponsored by Asian American Forward. You can visit our website at www dot asianamericanforward dot com. If you enjoyed the show this week or have a topic you'd like to hear us discuss on a future episode, send us your comments at info at asianamericanforward dot com. We'd love to hear from you. You can also find us on Facebook and hear more conversations between Dawn and I at our YouTube channel. If you're a fan of the show, leave us a review in the Apple Podcast Store or tell someone about us. It really helps people find the show. Thanks for listening and we'll talk to you next week.
Thank you. Bye-bye, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.